Thank you.
Welcome to the Town of Basalt Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Tuesday, February 18th. May we have a call to order?
Yes, Bill Maron.
Yo.
Kyle Oberkatter. Eric Vazik.
Here.
Rob Levitt.
Yes.
Cindy Hirschfield. Katie Haas Tettler.
Here.
Mike Horvath.
Here.
Bob Kaplan. And Ben Firestein.
Present.
Great, you have a quorum.
Excellent. First order of business is to approve the minutes from January the 21st. Do we have any comments, changes, or a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
I abstain.
I'm going to abstain too, I was not there.
With who? Great.
Good?
Yep.
Excellent. So, next order of business is a public hearing on the Basalt Center Circle Development Project amendments. And I will give it to staff to take it away.
Yeah, thank you. Let me please share my screen here. There we go. We have Steve Scadron here with CMC. This item is a public hearing for consideration of an amendment request submitted by Colorado Mountain College on behalf of BCC Basalt LLC, who are the owners of the property at 140 Basalt Center Circle. They're requesting amendments to the rental provisions on nine of the deed restricted units in the Basalt Center Circle BCC Development Project, which once again is at 140 Basalt Center Circle. As background, the BCC Development Project was approved for construction of 65 dwelling units in a grocery in place of the former Clark's Market Building that was recently demolished. As part of the approvals, there are 17 deed restricted units with rent caps. Ordinance number nine, series of 2024, approved of the condominiumization of the units in the project. And it set out a priority for the 17 units for purchasers. The priority purchasers included the Town of Basalt. It included employers of the onsite commercial. And it included the RE1 School District as well. And you can't see it here on my screen, I apologize, it's under that. But also first responder organizations in the Basalt area. The units were offered for sale to those organizations. And eight of the 17 deed restricted units were selected for purchase by these organizations. So after those organizations considered the potential to purchase the units, then the remaining deed restricted units were given an option to nonprofit organizations and special districts in the Basalt area. And as such, after those units were offered to that group of employers, there are still nine units remaining. And CMC would like to purchase the nine units, but have requested the ability for their employees and college students that work in Basalt, the Basalt area, to have a priority in renting these nine units. Then if there are not CMC employees and college students working in the Basalt area, then it would waterfall down to CMC employees and college students working elsewhere in the Roaring Fork Valley to rent the units. And then after that, if there were no takers on renting the units, then it would waterfall to the town employees, onsite commercial employees, RE1 School District employees, and employees of first responder organizations. So it's a waterfall system like the Basalt Community Housing Guidelines includes. In addition to the rental request, CMC also requested the ability to have the employees, their employees, have a first right of purchase on the units if CMC were to sell them in the future. And it would place a 3% appreciation cap on the units to ensure that they remain affordable. Then if they didn't have any employees that wanted to purchase the units, if they were to sell them, then it would give a second priority for the town, the onsite commercial operators, the RE1 School District, and first responding organization to purchase the units, which was required by the ordinance nine. Process wise, the P&amp;Z shall make a recommendation to council on the requests. And the Basalt Affordable Community Housing Commission, BAC, reviewed the request and was supportive of the rental provisions that were proposed. And it's in this document that you have in your packet. But they were not supportive of the purchase amendment to give the individual employees of CMC priority to purchase the units if CMC were to sell them. BAC thought that that wasn't consistent with the approvals that were granted in ordinance number nine, which set up that these units were for employers to buy the units and then sell, rent them as category units. So, staff has proposed some conditions that are in your packet. Those conditions include consistency with their representations. It includes language that would approve of the proposed amendments as they are written. If you wanted to go with BAC's recommendation, it would remove the last two sentences of condition number three. And once again, the BAC recommendation was not to approve of the amendment giving a first priority to purchase to CMC individual employees. So this evening, staff would suggest you hear applicant comments from Steve, ask questions of staff and the applicants, and then take public comments because it is a public hearing. And then discuss a recommendation to the town council. It doesn't look like we have any representation from the developers, but we do have the applicants here this evening.
Steve, anything to add?
James, that was thorough, thank you. First of all, thank you. It's fun for me to come before P&amp;Z. I started my long political career on P&amp;Z. So thank you so much for hearing the application, or the request. I'm sure you're familiar with CMC. I just want to say something about this. We talk about the term students. And I want you to know that our students tend older. We're not traditional students. It's not Animal House or the Fraternity Party showing up here. Our students are generally people looking for career changes in life. The average age of our students across CMC is about 25. We, the students who live in this housing, serve the community. We train all the police up and down the valley in our KLEDA program. One of our most robust programs is EMS and fire science. You can't get into it, all the firefighters. It's a real compliment to the citizens in our, in our communities responding to these natural environments that you, the reality of our natural environment signing up for our programs. The, we, our programming and the students who would be living in the housing are training in all of those disciplines that help run our local communities. The kind of critical skills that are so hard to, hard to find, you know, plumbing, electricians, and those kinds of programs. So I'm, I would also say, remind you that we own two units in the, we're slowly coming back to Basalt, CMC is, and we own two deed restricted units in the new development next to Free Range above Design Workshop over there. So this would help complement what the investment and support the community of Basalt as we have.
Cool. Commissioner, questions? The applicant or staff? Leave it open, Bill?
Yeah, I have a couple simple questions. Are the students and faculty from Aspen and Spring Valley campuses, or just Aspen? Is that what we're talking about? You know, what, what, the CMC campuses are the ones that would?
Can I, I had a question similar. So do you have a number of how many of your students or staff live here in Basalt?
James, do we, do you have those numbers?
I don't have numbers of how many CMC employees work in Basalt. But I do want to clarify, I think in the amendment request, it would cover a priority for those that worked in Basalt first. And then it would broaden out to both campuses, Aspen to Glenwood, if there weren't priority employees that worked in Basalt.
So it, yeah, but there's no hierarchy within that. All they have to be is a CMC student or faculty?
Yes.
And the other question I have is, if it's going to be that, would it, it would just be a random mix of two, two versus four-year students? Or are all the four-year students only going to be at Spring Valley?
No, it could be two-year or four-year students.
Okay. That's it?
Cool.
Other questions?
James, it was blocked from the screen. Was Pitten County on the list of people that have the option to buy?
It was. Pitten County and Eagle County first responding organizations, yeah.
No, first responders, but how about like they're up in Apches, Aspen, the Pitten County Affordable Housing?
Yeah, it was Pitten County as an organization.
Okay.
Eagle County as an organization.
And they didn't take any?
They didn't take any. Basically, the units that are being purchased are by the Town of Basalt, by Rock Bottom Ranch, and by Roaring Fork Conservancy are the ones that are currently under contract.
What was the last one, James?
Roaring Fork Conservancy.
Oh.
Is that one each? Roaring Fork Conservancy, one and Rock Bottom, one?
Yes.
My question relates to sort of the waterfall, because I think this touches on what you were saying, Rob, is first responders passed, the municipalities passed, the, the next level of nonprofits passed, then CMC was offered the opportunity. If CNC is, CMC is allowed to then sell to their employees, and then their employee wants to sell that deed restricted unit, it's going through that same waterfall. And if everything passes, just like this last one just did, the last sentence here on your process of resale says, "The unit shall be advertised pursuant to the process for the initial sale of the deed restricted units" outlined in subsection two above, which does not exist, that I can see in this document.
You're in the cross-through?
I'm in the cross-through language, yes.
Okay, yeah.
That's, that's number one. I is the process for resale. And then it says it's outlined in section two above, which I cannot see to exist. And again, just goes to that same question of if, if an employee that has sold a unit by CMC then goes to resell that unit, and it passes through the exact same list that we've just passed through right in this scenario. What then?
I think it's on page 13, in section two.
Yeah, I'm looking at that. And you're actually in section three, so you're referring back up to section two.
Oh, it goes all the way, no?
So is your question who?
Is that, is that section two? It says section double I. Is that, so see, your process for resale is one. And then it says section?
Subsection two.
Subsection two, yeah.
So is your question on who the units would go to?
Yeah, we've talked about, we've talked about the waterfall, and I understand that. And we just had the same real scenario where the entire waterfall passed. And then we were offered to a community member. Take no issue at all. If then they sell it to their employee, then their, their employee wants to sell it, and we get the same scenario we just had here now.
The intent of the language was that their request is that they could have individual employees of CMC purchase the units as a first priority. And then if they passed, then it would be offered to the organizations that were in ordinance number nine, which is the onsite commercial, the Town of Basalt, the RE1 School District, and then?
I, I understand that.
Yeah.
We watched all of them pass.
Okay, so if they pass again?
If they pass again.
Then, then it would go to the nonprofits in the Basalt area once again, which is?
And we watched all of them pass as well.
Yeah. Well, except for two of them.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
There's something that happens that's different in three years when this is occupiable.
I'm, I'm just curious, who's left holding the bag if?
Then it, then it splits out to nonprofit organizations between Aspen and Glenwood.
Uh huh.
Similar to CMC.
Okay.
And then it, then it would become general employers from Aspen to Glenwood, based on the town's housing, housing guideline.
Gotcha.
Question, go ahead.
Kind of along those lines, if the CMC employee that purchases the unit no longer works for CMC?
Well, the, the town doesn't kick people out. Our policy is, is not to kick people out unless they cease to be employed between Aspen and Glenwood and Roaring Fork Valley, then they would have to sell it.
Yeah, Rob, CMC has guidelines also to ensure that, I don't have the details here, but we protect against that as well with our housing policy. It's, it's not?
What, they buy a unit, they work for you, great. They take another job, great, but they still have the unit?
Yeah.
Wasn't there language, there was language about that this unit would then go into the policy of?
There's a grace period, and then they're required to give up the unit.
Really?
Yeah.
But that's, CMC's private policy.
That's CMC's.
But that was really my?
Yeah, there's, there is language here that says that once the unit is in possession of CMC, it's then, it's under their guidelines.
Right, that's, I was asking what the guidelines were, because we don't want to lose that unit.
Just to the jump.
Yeah.
We wouldn't either, yeah.
Mike, Cindy?
I'm sorry, I came in late, so I might have missed this. But what was the reason all these other organizations and entities passed on buying?
Well, we, we've heard from the school that they, they didn't have money allocated to purchase them. We have, we haven't tried to figure out whether the other ones.
I, I mean, I think just in general for the future, it would be important to know, you know, does that mean they just have no more need for housing or reset? Or was it something with the units? Is it the price or the size or, you know, I think that would be important feedback to get as we look forward, as, as we look forward to what would be appropriate for housing. So we just don't know at this point why they?
Don't know at this point, but we're happy to reach out and ask that question, sure.
Mike? So of the eight that's sold, I believe originally, if those go to resale, do those go back through that waterfall? No one gets preference? So the preference would only be to these units with CMC, and that's their kind of additional request, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Steve, are the units over here for sale or for rent? The two that you have?
Rent.
Rent, thank you. Any other questions?
What category are the units here?
They're all studio units, and half are category three and half are category one.
Relating to?
Relating to CMC.
Relating to this, this one.
Yeah.
What about the two that you guys currently own?
They're, they're category two.
Category two, okay. Thank you.
If there are no more questions, we'll open up for a public hearing at 6:22. Give the random straggler who's going to run in 30 seconds, or?
Yeah, let me give the speech here quickly. If you're?
We were told you didn't have to do this anymore.
Okay, fair enough.
If you want to, and I know you guys are so, so well-trained, I respect that.
To the Planning and Zoning Commission on this item, you can go to the second page of the Town Planning and Zoning Commission packet for February 18th, 2025, and get the Zoom link at that location.
Does look like we have an attendee which wasn't up there before.
Looks like Andrew Light is on. Andrew, do you have anything to add to the conversation? If so, please raise your hand. Oh, go ahead, Andrew.
Stuart, you know, my understanding is the School District, for example, had, they, they committed a lot of money to that project that was the, in, near Target in Glenwood. They've also had, you know, significant financial problems, and that's just my understanding. The sheriff, you know, we talked to Pitten County, and some of their feedback was, you know, our people don't want studios. So, that's, that's just sort of the, the anecdotal feedback we've gotten.
Cool. Thank you, Andrew. Seeing as there's no more comments, we'll close the public hearing at 6:24 and open it for any commissioner comments.
I have a question for staff. What was BAC's objection to the second part of this?
Yeah. Yeah, BAC's objection is that they felt that the ordinance number nine of 2024 was set up to, you know, provide the units to be sold to employers, and so that employers could rent them based on the category limits related to rent. They thought that giving individual employees the ability to purchase them was not consistent with the intent of that ordinance generally.
Thank you, James. Instead of going around, just if someone?
I'm in defense on that part of it. BAC makes sense.
I, I think?
But so did Steve and their processes.
I, I also think that if, you know, CMC's rules are that, you know, if an employee leaves, then the, the unit is then returned back to the, the pool, what, what's different than just renting that, that unit? I mean, I understand the financial obligations behind buying it and the 3% growth, but then, you know, if it's just getting resold back to CMC, does that meet the intent of ordinance nine?
Clearly, BAC did not think so.
Yeah.
I guess the question would also be, how do, how does CMC have any jurisdiction once they sell it? Like, once they sell it to someone who works for CMC, that person now owns, owns it, stops working?
There's a deed restriction, so they could put whatever they wanted in the restriction, right?
Yeah, in condition number three that you have in your packet, that would require that they update the deed restriction to basically require that if, if the employee purchased it from CMC, and they wanted to resell it in the future, that it would have to go through that waterfall, including back to CMC as a first right to purchase, and then the other organizations that are in ordinance nine.
Like I said, so the deed would say, if you stop working with CMC, you have to sell this.
Oh, you're talking about the private?
Yes.
Guidelines.
Okay.
Other responses or commissioner comments in addition?
I have a couple comments. You know, initially, and I think that some people could have some objection to, you know, bending the rules for a valley-wide organization. But I don't really see how that is that big of an issue from my standpoint. Did a lot of thinking on this this afternoon, because it kind of goes contrary to what we were originally trying to do. But I, I basically see CMC as a valley-wide institution, one that the Town of Basalt benefits greatly. So, you know, by having, being, as Basalt being part of a valley-wide organization, a valley-wide community as well, I see it, it uprootates any of those concerns. But I, I could see where some people would, you know, kind of think, well, that's not fair. That's not what we intended to do, but, you know, in, in light of, you know, the benefits that the town gets from being part of the CMC community, I think it's worthwhile. I also wanted to say that, to make things simple, we were discussing a lot of the, the ownership issues. It'd be best, in my mind, if we just adhere to the BAC recommendation. It's just simpler.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it starts, you know, getting fairly mind-bending, and when it gets mind-bending, it, it, it's like, one of the reasons there's so many rules about housing in the valley is because so many people have taken advantage of it in so many unique and interesting and complex ways. And people always find ways to do that, and that seems to me like one of the unintended consequences of going in this direction. So that's, that's my feeling, and that's why I think we should look at just accepting the, the language with the, that BAC suggestion.
Is that your motion?
I wasn't planning on it, but if you want it, if you agree with it?
Let's see if there are any more comments, then we can worry about the motion.
The door.
I was going to make a motion along those lines, if, if there's agreement with what I just said.
I'm in agreement with what you said, Bill. I think that, you know, the simplicity of exclusions and special preferential treatment, I completely agree that CMC is a valley-wide institution, and having them here in the community is a benefit. But simplifying the language per BAC's recommendation makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if some bulletproof language could be developed in the future, we could revisit it. But from, from, from what we got in front of us now, it sounds like a quagmire to me.
And we've just seen it play out as well, with, with all of these institutions pass and pass and pass and pass and pass. Who's not to say that can happen again in the future, and then we're back in a quagmire?
Yeah, and that's just one of the problems with for sale, employee housing units. But that's a whole other issue. And we're not going there tonight.
Yep.
It was taken out of our hands. Cindy?
Hi, comments, no surprise. You know, I've expressed my thoughts before about what this project has turned into, which is not at all, I think, in the spirit of what it was pitched as and what it was approved as. You know, these units are being marketed as pied-à-terres, just for second homeowners. They're not, you know, we, we were pitched as, oh, this is going to be a huge dent in the employee housing, you know, conundrum here. And really, it's not at all. And I think that there's something, you know, there's something really wrong and something we should look at if all these institutions, which we hear from all the time, need housing for their employees, and not a single one wanted to purchase one of these units. There's something wrong there. I don't think that should just be ignored. And, so, I mean, I just think this, I, I don't think this is, this project is, is turning into what it was pitched as and what it was approved in the spirit of. You know, that said, I could see, you know, given that all the other employers passed, I would have no problem allowing CMC employees to be part of the, the? I, I would have no problem allowing CMC employees to be part of the, the, you know, unit purchase for it. I would draw the line at college students again. I do not think that's a good look for us to say like, well, you know, God, we're so desperate for employee housing here, but yet in the whole town, like, we're gonna have college students living there. I mean, you know, there is a full campus with dorms and stuff. I just, I think that's gonna be really hard to justify to people. And that's not something that I would be able to stand behind, so, yeah, my, I would be for employees and not for students.
The college kids did need to work in Basalt.
I know, but still, it's just, I mean, that, that just seems a lot more transient to me.
But at the same time, the CMC students who live in Basalt tend to be from Basalt. And there are kids that are eighteen, twenty, twenty-two years old who are working for a living, trying to survive in our valley. And maybe they can't go to Spring Valley, or maybe they don't want to be at home, and this is a chance for them to be in the community. I agree with your, I agree with your.
Yes, I just, I think that might be parsing it a little too much, and, I mean, do we, you know, if they're from Basalt, like, they pay rent to their parent, I, you know, I just think that's a little. Again, I'm just thinking, how would I explain this and justify it to somebody who is coming to us and saying, you know, you, you really lack employee housing? I wouldn't be able to, to say, well.
Not, not, I agree with your general idea that this has changed and wasn't the exact concept that we had voted on and talked about previously, but I also do know we talked about having twenty-somethings living there and being part of downtown and being vibrant.
That's not happening.
I understand that, but, but it's back to the original concept of having students and that, I, not to debate you, but just saying.
I know, I know, I just, yeah, I just can't get behind that part of it, but I would be on the influence.
Yeah, I think the pejorative college student terminology as having been one twenty years ago. You know, that comes with roommates, and these are, these are studios. You know, there is something sequestered about someone living, you know, in their own studio. So I, I don't, I've debated that as well and, and thought it, but at the same time, just, just like Steve mentioned, it is community members seeking higher education, like Eric spoke about. You know, it, it could be people that, that are living in the valley and looking for that as well. So I, I can't separate how they want to use their housing to, to house people and bring, bring people into our community for longer than six months, which I think is the intention here, the way the code is written.
Other comments, answers to the questions?
I'm supportive of the BACH language as well.
Would you like to craft a?
Yeah, sure. I will, I will make a motion to recommend this to the town with the, with the staff's language, including the, the BACH modifications.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
We have a second.
You wanna do a roll call, or you wanna just a voice vote?
Uh, let's see here. This is. Uh, we can just do a voice vote.
Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck, Steve, yeah.
Thank you very much.
The last thing on our agenda then are commissioner comments and staff updates.
I appreciate your, your interest. Um, let's see here, so the community composting, we're calling it the Basalt Compost Outpost. Something like that, is fully functional. We've had eighty residents sign up already. The first fifty have been awarded free compost bins, so we're excited about that. And if you haven't had a chance to sign up yet or you're interested, you can go to basalt.net/compost and fill out the quiz to get the secret code to the door, so you can drop off your compost for free. It is limited to residential compost, no commercial compost, or yard compost at this time. Other fun news, tomorrow, staff is having a meeting with our consultant to kick off pursuit of our other affordable housing initiatives. Those other initiatives we'll be looking at are outlining a deed restriction incentive program, an ADU program, investigating some long-term funding mechanisms for affordable housing in Basalt, and reviewing our affordable housing mitigation rate for development applications. So lots of fun, fun stuff there.
Last one was the, right now we're fifteen percent. It could go up to twenty-five or fifty.
We, we currently, for residential housing, we've got twenty-five percent of the square footage and twenty percent of the units. And then for the commercial mitigation, it's fifteen percent of the employees mitigated.
So.
That's a place for us to start, Cindy?
Um, that could include further work on the STR regulations, but that's under, moving forward in a continued public hearing in April. Um, the Stotz Mill Affordable Housing Duplex that the town is building is framed up, so you can drive by and look at the progress, super exciting. That's on schedule for a summer delivery. It is currently prioritized for town employees. As a recruiting measure, we are currently in the process of looking for a new Public Works director. A new what director? Public Works. Yep. Uh, look at my board across the way there. I think those are my main updates. Did you have anything, James?
Um, the next meeting, P and Z will review in early March, the parcel nine, Surpris Meadows Affordable Housing, next to the rugby field at Willetts. So we've got the application in on that for sixteen units, and that will be a sketch plan review.
Is that first meeting?
Yeah, it's the first meeting, which would be March?
Fifth or so?
Uh, March fourth.
A little feedback on the compost. I took the quiz, and I don't know if I got them all wrong or all right. So, you know, a little feedback on like, you got these wrong, maybe you paid attention to what you're putting in there. You know, just something to think about.
I think she's been emailing, maybe, maybe we're missing some, but I think she's been emailing most people back when there's something wrong. Maybe you passed with flying colors.
Maybe.
Know your stuff.
That's good, that's good, though. I'll double check on that.
Um, can I put in my semi-annual request still to have a presentation from the?
West Mountain Regional Housing Coalition?
Mountain West Regional?
West Mountain Regional Housing Coalition, yeah.
I would still like to have them present to us, because I think it would give us a better framework to work with when we're thinking about employee housing issues.
Is that, that's April?
Yeah, April, yeah.
I also have a, a requ, a little bit of a request. I personally have been traveling a lot, and I was wondering if I could get like a look ahead, email look ahead on dates, so I don't book travel on, because, because our, we have so few meetings compared to the past that I can't always count on the full schedule, so it helps me to plan my travel dates around that. And that would be really helpful.
We would love to do that. We don't always get applications when we think we are. So it's hard to know those for certain.
I know, but sometimes they fall apart, but if you guys have a tentative one planned, even if you're expecting it to fall apart, just so I know not to schedule travel at that time would be, would be really useful.
Yeah.
And so, I, I, I'm okay if something disintegrates, because I'm used to that.
Sure.
But, and then also, I wanted to say, since, you know, speaking of Public Works, I want to commend them for how well they have been plowing the bike paths. They get right on it, and a lot of times the bike path is plowed before anything else. And I, since, you know, I've been using it to buy groceries even in the winter, it's been really useful. I really, really appreciate it.
That's great feedback.
I want, I want them, because they, they can't tell if anyone's even using it, because it's, it's not a lot of people, but it, it's definitely some.
Phil's first point. And would we want to consider just doing one meeting a month and knowing there was gonna be the first Tuesday? And, I mean, I love this shit, you know that, so I'm not trying to get out of, get together with you guys. We, we just don't have that much stuff going on these days.
Well, you, you don't know that for sure. You could have some applications come in, and you guys could have a busy spring.
From, from my standpoint, I just don't want to miss a meeting, just because I scheduled travel when I didn't think there was gonna be a, a meeting, and then there was.
I, I mean, I, I totally respect that, and I think that's one of our goals, and not having meetings for the sake to have a meeting. We'll try.
I, I appreciate it.
Duly noted.
Just, just the effort would be handy.
Yeah, sure.
It doesn't even have to be all the time, but when you know stuff, it helps if you let us know too.
Yeah, sure.
I do think there's a lot of stuff we could talk about on stuff that we didn't, on nights that we didn't have applications. We sort of talk about affordable housing.
One of those nights, we'd have a presentation.
The idea of, you know, where we stand on attainable housing, because that doesn't work, right? But it seemed like there's a discussion there and even a vision statement that could come out of it. But during an application review, it's not really the appropriate time for that discussion.
Yeah, I, I, I think we can certainly talk about having presentations from groups as needed. I think a fine balance here is, this is the Planning and Zoning Commission, so kind of your role is to review land use applications and consider things against the land use code, and for example, the BACH, the Basalt Attainable Housing, Community Housing Group is really to focus on housing policy, so not that that's not of an interest and for you guys to talk about as well. But it, it just might be duplicative to have that kind of work session here to, to talk about your, your policies on housing. But I certainly can, you know, we can work through something, maybe a joint work session or something to that matter.
I have another question. I don't know if you can answer this, but when I was, before the meltdown, a few weeks ago, I was skiing on the cross-country skiing on the Rio Grande Trail behind my house on South Side, and to my surprise and delight, I found like three huge loops groomed in the fields. And I didn't know, like, are those new this year, or how did that come about? Do you know any, do you know about that?
I don't know which fields.
I think the one on Billy's side is, was there last year, Jill said.
It was, okay.
I didn't know it either, but.
Go out there? Yeah, I was just really, I was like, oh my gosh, I can go out and do laps in the morning before work. I hadn't seen those. I didn't know where they came from.
Yeah, I hadn't noticed them before this year either, but maybe.
Who, who does the grooming, the Nordic grooming over there? Is it?
I don't know.
Just Picken County?
I think it's the Nordic Council.
It's the Nordic Council.
Nordic Council, okay. Yeah, I was just really excited to see it.
Yeah, and there, there was a concept when Stotz Mill was going through to actually do a loop in the South Park as well. But my understanding is they just really haven't had enough snow to make it work so far, but maybe we, maybe we do.
What with the South Park, the?
Uh, where the tennis courts are over there, the tennis.
I think that would be a little small. These are just in like the farmer field, the ranch fields. There were three different ones.
Billy's upper field, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, they're, they're, those are great as they, as they are.
We can check.
Always nice.
I don't think staff has a whack of them, so.
Any other questions or comments? A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Go Cindy first, we'll go Bill second. All in favor?
Aye.
A meeting is adjourned at six forty-five.
Thank you.
Hard to disagree.
I discovered those tricks.